Yeah, good morning, everybody. All right, we'll go ahead and start our meeting this morning. Right? The sheriff telling a story. I know. We'll just go ahead and adjourn the meeting and do this another day. Okay, good morning. Today is August 5th, 2025. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Robert Thayer.
Here.
All five members are present, so at this time, would you please rise for invocation from Pastor Andrew Cromwell, Colonia Church? Morning, Andrew. Thank you for coming.
Proverbs 29:2 says, "When the righteous increase, the people rejoice; but when the wicked rule, the people groan." Would you bow your heads with me and we'll pray? Lord, we thank you that you are the one that is in control, and we thank you, God, that you're the one that is the author of all righteousness. We pray today that in this meeting, that goodness and righteousness will prevail, that truth will come to the surface. Look, we ask for a blessing upon the board and upon the staff of this county. We thank you for Kings County, and we thank you for the ways that you have continued to bless it. We ask, God, that you would continue to give us righteous leaders, Lord, that you would preserve them and that you'd protect them for their families and for their futures, God, that you would prevail. We pray a blessing upon this county, on every person that's in it, Lord, that you would, in the streets, let peace and goodness prevail, and would you just push back wickedness, violence, and all those things, Lord, that are seeking to destroy our county? We pray, God, that in place of those things, you would bring your great providence and your great goodness. We pray this in your mighty name. Amen.
All may be taken flag, ready? Let the United States of America and to the public stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Hey, very good. At this time, we'll go to unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. For items which are on the agenda, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the board on each item as it is brought up for discussion. Speakers will limit their time to two minutes, and we'll start off with the sheriff's posse. So we'll have Sheriff Robinson come down here today, and he has a, he's going to receive a presentation, I believe. Our sheriff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. Dave Robinson, Kings County Sheriff. Honored to be here today. I know everybody thinks I brought in some stage dancers this morning, but it's the Kings County Sheriff's Posse looking good. Just really appreciate them coming today. As we've done in the past, once or twice a year, we come to your board and do a check presentation. We'd just like to take a couple of minutes of your time and do that this morning. In my 15 years, you know, the posse's donated approximately $20,000, $200,000 to the sheriff's office. The craft feed's coming up. I'm sure Anthony's probably going to mention that, and so I'm going to turn it over to Anthony Azavito. The posse was started approximately 90 years ago now, fellas? Eighty-eight years ago. I believe Sheriff Kimes was the one that was the original sheriff that was part of the posse. Probably the most active sheriff in the posse was Orville Clyde, and reasonably so. He was an eight-term sheriff, and so when you're an eight-term sheriff, you're probably pretty active in a lot of things. So anyway, I will turn it over to Anthony Azavito. Anthony, thank you for being here this morning, and I have the big check when you're ready.
Morning, Anthony. How you doing today?
Good. I'm doing well. Thank you. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to come in here and make this presentation to Sheriff Robinson. It is, it's going to his K-9 group, his Explorer group, and a few other projects that he has. We get our funds from a craft feed that we put on September 6th this year. Thanks for the cooperation from all the departments that we have, be at first park, so it's going to be with the county facility. And as Sheriff said, this is our 88th year in existence that we've been in existence. I think I'm like second or third generation coming into this group. I came in in 1985, brought in by some of the original members, some of the charter members. So we just got back from Santa Barbara, rode at yesterday's parade, so we represented the county, and we looked good. We looked great. I think we were, we were the third entry in that parade, and that was, that's one of the biggest horse parades in the state of California. So it was, it was a lot of fun for us.
And the week before, you were in Salinas.
Salinas. Yeah, we were in Salinas for Salinas, California rodeo, and that was a two-day rodeo, a two-day parade that we rode, Saturday and Sunday. You want, we'll just go ahead and move on with the presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony. I'll ask the posse to come on down into the well, and if the board will so much indulge us, we'd love to get a picture with y'all. Thank you very much.
Now, we want to thank the Kings County Sheriff's Posse for all they do. It's been here for a long time. I know my family's been in there, and it's also in the Sheriff's Museum. I have a great uncle's saddle on display, and I have a full uniform press ready to be put on display when the sheriff's ready. That's fine. Yeah, that's why we did you first. You can have your day back. We might be here all day. Thank you. Hey, at this time, we'll go to comments from the public, and we have any written comments.
We did not receive any written comments. Our first speaker is Sheila Verdugo.
Morning, Sheila. Yeah.
Don't have to do, okay.
Yes, pull down to your mouth. There you go.
Good morning, supervisors. My name is Sheila Verdugo. I'm from Avonel. I would like to express Councilman Verdugo and my deepest gratitude for each of you for your continued support to the residents of Avonel throughout the fire contract process. Supervisor Valley, your consistent presence and commitment, listening to the concerns of our community have not gone unnoticed. Thank you for your continuously advocating for the needs of Avonel and for ensuring that our voices were heard every step of the way. Special thank you to Kiria for your tireless efforts in navigating the fire contract to the final draft. We're praying that it gets signed, and we are, we are safe. To the final draft, your hard work and persistence have been invaluable in ensuring that we have a solid agreement that meets the needs of our community. Additionally, Supervisor Verboon and Kiria and Richard for taking the time out to just come to Avonel, right, to provide the citizens with necessary information and to gain a clear understanding of what that fire contract looked like. And your willingness to engage with the community speaks volumes about your commitment to transparency and collaboration. Thank you all for being dedicated leaders, all of you supervisors, and we appreciate you all. I just want to take that time. We, we had a special council meeting last night, and you know, the fire contract looks like it's going to come back. I mean, it was voted on to come back, and we're just, we're praying, and that prayer was absolutely a godsend, right? The words was, was absolutely correct when we're asking for good leaders, right? We're asking for, for righteous leaders, and I don't know if we're getting that right now, but I have so much faith that that is going to happen through this process. Oh, sorry. So, but again, thank you so much for, for everything. We can't tell you enough how much it means to us.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Sarah Hacker.
Good morning, Ms. Hacker. How are you today?
I'm coming to you today because on July 15th, we had a open protest on the county property as well as Vera Goat Dairy from DXC, which is a direct action everywhere, yeah, direct action everywhere, which is an animal rights organization. They brought several complaints to the sheriff's department as well as our office regarding animal cruelty practices relating to Vera Goat Dairy. And based on those complaints, our office and the sheriff's department, through the Rural Crimes Task Force, conducted an investigation. And because this was such a public event, and the media came out, and it involved protesters on county property, and I wanted to inform you guys what the outcome of that investigation was. Today, I wrote a clearance letter to Vera Goat Dairy, which will be delivered to them. The summary of the complaint is Kings County Sheriff's Office Detective Sergeant Santos met with two representatives of DXC, Ms. Carla Cabral and Ms. Michelle Johnson, both of which were from Santa Clara. During the meeting, they raised three main concerns, that the goats were sneezing, coughing, and crying, and were allegedly kept in oversized conditions, or overcrowded conditions. The facility experienced an unusually high mortality rate, and the goat remains were being discarded and dead piles left exposed for scavenging wildlife. The people who brought these complaints did not have actual personal knowledge of it. They had just heard about these conditions. On the same day, District Attorney Investigator Ward, as well as Deputy Sheriff Detective Estrada, along with Detective Sergeant Santos, went to Vera Dairy and inspected the facility. The dairy was clean and free from debris and feces. The goats appeared healthy, clean, and dry. The kid pens were lined with fresh almond holes. The goats could access food from a trough outside of their enclosure. All goats had available shade in the sun, and the north side of the facility appeared to be mounds of manure, which did cover the goat carcasses. We went, the Kings County Rural Task Force dove in a little bit further, and it was determined that Detective Sergeant Santos had visited the goat dairy three to four times in the course of his duties as a rural crime investigator. On each occasion, including this last one on July 15th, he observed no signs of neglect or inhumane treatment. In fact, he described the facility as one of the most cleanest and well-maintained in the county. Specifically, he noted the corrals for milking goats were regularly scraped and maintained. The kid pens were clean and freshly bedded. The goats were regularly fed and appeared well-cared-for. It's also worth noting that Vera Goat Dairy is certified humane by the Humane Farm Animal Care, a reputable third-party nonprofit organization. They also looked at the allegedly high mortality rate. Vera Goat Dairy has approximately 5,000 to 550,000 goats, and the owner stated that approximately one goat dies per day on average during kidding season. That goes up to about three to four. Based on the National Animal Health Monitoring System, the overall goat mortality rate for adults is 7.2% annually, and for kids, 13.8%. Based on these statistics, Vera Goat Dairy's mortality rate is well within industry standards. Lastly, they looked at the unhealthy carcass disposal. Vera Goat Dairy disposes its deceased animals by composting, which is placing carcasses beneath manure piles located on the north side of the property away from the herd. This practice aligns with evolving state guidance. California law restricts disposal methods through burial, and while a landfill is possible, the cost is absolutely impractical. The California Department of Food and Agriculture supports composting as a viable method, and Assembly Bill Form 1-1 is currently under consideration to formally authorize composting for routine livestock mortality events. Upon investigation, the investigators found carcasses buried under manure, not exposed. The property is enclosed with fencing, and the herd is guarded by four large dogs, further reducing any likelihood of access by wild animals. And after careful review, the Kings County District Attorney's Office finds no merit to the allegations presented by DXC in their protests, and no further action will be taken. The case is closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that report. They said the goats are crying?
They're from Santa Clara. They're the Bay Area. They don't know.
Well, thank you very much for that update.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you just allow me 20 seconds while the sheriff and deputies are still here and the district attorney? I was going to do it during board member announcements, but I just wanted to say, on behalf of the community of Quark, and I want to thank all the local law enforcement agencies, the sheriff deputies, Kings County District Attorney's Office, for all the attention they gave the city of Quark, and especially last week. Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of things going on in the city right now, and there's a lot of anxiety, a lot of people, a lot of good people who are just scared to be out and about right now. And they gave a lot of attention, and since that night, you could feel a little bit of the air being let out of the room, and so I know that was dangerous. The community's on social media seeing high-speed chases, which puts the men and women and law enforcement in danger, going after the bad guys, the airplane in the air. But on behalf of the community, a lot of positive feedback I got from them, I wanted publicly just to give a big thank you to all. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Next, please.
That's all the speaker cards. That's all, nobody online with their hands raised?
Anybody in the audience like to add to our conversation today? Yes, sir.
Well, Chairman, and everybody else, and all Supervisors, just, I'm here to thank you also, just a moment, to, for giving us the opportunity. I know it's been a hard road here the last few months, but things got accomplished last night. We voted 5 votes to pass the contract that you guys sent back, and it's coming back to you sometime today, I hope, or sometime during the week. And just thanking you for, for all those many years that you've helped us out. You know, people don't, some people don't realize how much you have helped us and supported us in keeping our fire department there and have now. And a lot of people think now they're appreciative of what you've done for us for so many years that this has happened. But I think we're in the right path, and hopefully we'll continue to have good, good relations to keep that fire department there as long as we can. And just like to thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate the kind words. I know as far as your contract coming back to us, it had to go through a proper process, and we'll notice our next Friday, it'll probably go up public notice 72 hours ahead of time, and then we'll see it sometime next weekend. So I look forward to reviewing that and bringing it back to the board next Tuesday. Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, quickly, I also want to thank Councilman Ricardo Vertigo for his leadership. Throughout the last couple of months, what he just said as far as the county helping them out and saying thank you, he's the only elected official on that council who has done that, while the numbers were being spun a different way. In a negative light towards the county, he would constantly speak up. He did again last night at the council meeting. And also, I want to thank him. He requested an amendment to the resolution last night as all this was taking place. He wanted, for full transparency, he asked for a minimum of 30 days that the city manager and the council would have to notify the community of Avonel before they would even start thinking about a termination of the Kings County Fire Contract or any other ideas that they may have in regards to the city's firefight services. And he worked hard to get that amendment put in. It was passed 5-0. And so, and thank you to the fire chief who was physically there last night. He went, he spoke as well, but, and thank you for your attendance as well, and Kiria's and staff. I know staff did a lot of work, but just appreciation on both sides, respect is there, Councilman, thank you.
Yeah, end of the day, you're still our residents, so we take care of you. Okay, if there's nobody else, we'll move on to the next item, which is item three, approval of the minute. A report out of close session from regular meeting from July 29th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was nothing to report.
Okay, item B is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, July 29th, 2025. Moved by supervisor Robinson, seconded by supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Five in favor. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to item four, consent counter. All items listed on the consent counter are to be considered routine and will be acted by one motion. If a board member has a question, request, or additional, or request additional information, or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should not be taken up until after questions have been addressed and comments made. And the public has an opportunity to comment on the consent counter items. What's the board's pleasure? So moved. Moved by supervisor Nevs, seconded by supervisor Thayer. Do we have any questions for the audience? Saying then, we'll go back to roll call.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on now to regular consent counter. Item passes. Regular counter item, Child Support Services, Marie Waite. Morning, Marie. How are you?
Good morning. I'm great. Chairman and members of the board, Marie Waite, Director of Child Support Services. We're here today to respectfully request that your board proclaim August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month in Kings County. Observed annually in August throughout California and nationwide, Child Support Awareness Month highlights the critical role Child Support Service has in supporting the well-being of children and families. It is also an opportunity to recognize the ongoing efforts and evolution of Kings County Child Support Services as we continue to adapt the needs of our growing and diverse community. This morning, you'll hear from three partners who illustrate core values of the department, education, relationships, and dependability, which are all reflected in our daily work. These partnerships showcase how the department is committed to serving our community with compassion, innovation, and impact. To begin, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Scott Howell, Public Guardians Veteran Service Officer.
What does Scott?
Thank you, Marie. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to appear in front of you today, and I'm going to speak about education. One of the foundational values of KCCS is education. Providing clear information, outreach, and tools that empower current and future customers. In celebration of Child Support Awareness Month, KCCS is proud to host the Second Annual Summer Kids' Day this Thursday, August 7th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Fast Plaza in Hanford. This free, family-friendly event will offer back-to-school resources, raffles of backpacks, school supplies and gift cards, free haircuts for youth under 18 while supplies last, face painting, mini manicures, and more. Kings County Community Action Organization is contributing 200 complimentary food kits and free samples from their demonstration kitchen, and will be enrolling families in their Head Start and Child Development preschool programs. Summer Kids' Day represents our collective commitment to education, engagement, and equitable access to services. We encourage everyone in Kings County to attend and take part in the celebration. Now, please welcome Victor Perez, Director of UCP Hanford.
Morning, Victor.
Morning. Thank you. At the heart of any successful program is relationships, and Kings County Child Support Services understands the importance of building and maintaining meaningful partnerships. The collaboration between UCP Hanford Children's Program and Kings County Child Support Services is a powerful example of what's possible when public agencies and nonprofit organizations align with the shared purpose, empowering families and improving lives. Together, we are expanding outreach, enhancing resources, and offering compassionate support to those we serve. Our partnership is not just about service delivery. It's about building trust, connection, and hope for families in Kings County. Kings County Child Support Services continues to prioritize cross-agency collaboration to ensure community members have access to the highest quality and care and support. Next, please welcome Rosemary Ron, Kings County First Five Executive Director and Director of Kings County Public Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Rosemary.
Morning, supervisors, chairman. Dependability, another core value of Kings County Child Support Services is dependability. Being a consistent, responsive, and trustworthy presence in the lives of the families they serve. At Summer Kids' Days, the Public Health Department and First Five Kings County are proud to join with KCSS and other county departments to demonstrate the commitment in action. Alongside the DA's Victim Witness Office, Behavioral Health, Human Services Agency, Job Training Office, Office of Emergency Services, and the library, we will provide critical resources to children and families in a welcoming and supportive setting. When county agencies come together, showing up, stepping up, and working hand in hand, we send a powerful message that Kings County cares. That's what it means to be dependable.
Good.
As you could see, this event could not happen without all these amazing partners that we have. So thank you to our speakers and to the board for your ongoing support of Kings County families. We hope to see members of our community this Thursday, August 7th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Fast Plaza for Summer Kids' Day. Printed flyers are available on the agenda table, and in addition to that, if there's any questions that anyone has, please reach out to us, our local number, 559-852-4127, or by email, support counts@co.kings.ca.us. At this time, I respectfully request that your board adopt the proclamation declaring August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month in Kings County. The resolution has been reviewed and approved by council. We're happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions from the board? Motion by supervisor Thayer, seconded by supervisor Nevs. Any questions to the audience? Saying then, we'll go back for roll call vote.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, we have a proclamation here. We'll go down and take a picture.
Yes, please.
Okay. I know, if you want to. You're very subtle about it. Good job. Yeah.
Big smiles, one. I want to make sure I can see everybody. Big smile. If I can't see you, you can't see me. That was perfect. You have so long.
Am I here for me?
Oh, I don't think, yeah. I don't know.
Extended hours, we're good?
Just the closing of the hours.
I need to do that, right?
Yeah, probably, probably need to outline that.
Okay, we'll go on to the next item, which is the same thing, basically, and it's consider consider authorizing Kings County Child Support Services to temporarily extend public service hours on Thursday, August 7th, 2025, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. What's the board's pleasure? So moved. Moved by supervisor Nevs, seconded by supervisor Thayer. Any questions to the audience? Saying no, we'll go roll call vote.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Okay, 5 o'clock on Thursday. Be there. Four?
Four to seven.
Four to seven.
Seven thirty for you.
Oh, I got to clean up. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is Community Development Agency. We have Chuck Kenny. Morning, Chuck.
Morning. How are you today? Doing well. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The Community Development Agency is currently in the process of updating Kings County General Plan and Development Code. As part of that update process, the General Plan Advisory Committee is needed to receive public input and provide recommendations to the planning commission and board throughout the general plan development. Is the goal to appoint a range of community members, including residents, business owners, and community experts. and community experts and leaders to provide balanced and comprehensive knowledge base to be able to put, provide input into that development of the General Plan and Development Code. The G P A C will consist of at least thirteen individuals, but not more than twenty-one members appointed by your board. Members carry full voting rights on G P A C decisions and recommendations. The G P A C will serve as an advisor, in an advisory capacity only, to the Planning Commission and the Board. But the G P A C shall have no authority to take actions that bind the Planning Commission or Board to any specific action. Tentatively, there will be, uh, seven G P A C meetings for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six calendar years. In addition, G P A C members will be encouraged to attend public outreach events during the process of the update. There will be no compensation for G P A C members. Upon approval of the G P A C, uh, bylaws, applications will be made available with, and submitted to the clerk of the board, as shown outlined in the agenda packet. And, uh, you'll notice that we did have a revised resolution come before you, which added a whereas, which specifies whereas all previous general plan advisory committees shall be superseded and replaced by the formation of this general plan advisory committee. That was because the last general plan update that we did, we did have a G P A C approved through, uh, resolution by your board. This one is slightly different than that one because we're trying to follow the best practices that are current with today's standards, so. With that, I request that you adopt the revised resolution as amended and approve the bylaws of the General Plan Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I, I, I just have a couple of questions, I think I have a couple of questions. How long do you think it's going to take to comprise, I think, was, did I read it was like a minimum of twenty-one members for the advisory board and then a maximum of up to?
A minimum of thirteen and a maximum of twenty-one.
Okay, okay, like, that's if I saw your math for you. Um, and then, when, when do you expect that to be? Like, is there a time limit on when you expect to have this board put together?
I suspect, uh, it will be soon after the thirty days from when the applications are released.
And then, is there any, do we look for, like, percentages to represent the entirety of the county, all five districts, or?
So, when you, uh, have the opportunity, you will receive all of the applications and be able to pick and choose whom you feel best represents the community. We don't have any specific requirements because we don't know who is going to be applying and where they're going to be applying from. We didn't want to put roadblocks in your path to establishing this committee because we wanted to, uh, get going as quickly as possible so that we can, can get the, uh, general plan process moving as quickly as possible.
Right, and then, and then in speaking to community members, recruiting community members to these, what's our messaging to them, like, like, how much of, how much time, how many days a week, how many times a month, whatever this plan is that we can at least pass along for their consideration?
So, right now, tentatively, we're looking at seven meetings over the next coming year. Um, they will be spread out, uh, probably, you know, every month and a half to two months, for them to be able to meet. And I would request that your board, as you are aware of the most, uh, the best candidates out there, to please speak with those candidates to encourage them to make an application through the clerk of the board.
Got it, thank you, that, that's all.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Kenny, so, does it, does it only affect the unincorporated areas, or does, do you pay respect to city limits and?
No, we only, we only have governance over the unincorporated areas of the county, so our general plan only covers the unincorporated areas outside the city limits.
Any other questions? Moved by, by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor there, do we have any questions for the audience? Saying then, we'll go back to the clerk or roll call vote.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Brubin?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes, thank you. Item number two, sir.
Perfect. So, this item, I'm, uh, coming to give you a report out from last night's planning commission meeting. Uh, there was one item of business on the planning commission's, uh, calendar, which was conditional use permit twenty-five dash O two, which was an application to establish a hundred and fifty-foot monopole cell tower, uh, which is going to be located at two seven zero three one Omaha Avenue, Kettleman City, Assessor Partial Number zero three six one two zero zero thirty-three. The, uh, there was no objections to this project, and the planning commission approved it unanimously.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Just one, Mr. Kenny, was my district two rep in attendance?
No, he was not.
You didn't? Moved to accept. Moved by supervisor, uh, Neves, second by supervisor there. Uh, do we have any questions to the audience? Saying then, we'll go back to roll call vote.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
All right.
Doug Brubin?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny, item passes. Okay, we'll go on now to Public Health Department. And I think we have Rosemary Ron. And Thomas, you're not going to get it?
Yeah, Tom, Thomas is presenting, I hope he gets it.
He got the look and the finger point.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisor Rosemary Rand. It's my pleasure to introduce Thomas Brand, our WIC director for Kings County.
Morning, Thomas, how you doing?
Good morning, how are y'all doing today? Oh, hey, Carmen. This is Carmen Escobar, our regional breastfeeding liaison here. And, morning Chairman of the Board, Board members, Thomas Brand, the WIC director for the Kings County Department of Public Health. I am here today to request your board's approval to proclaim the month of August as National Breastfeeding Awareness Month in Kings County. Twenty twenty-five marks the fiftieth anniversary of Kings County's WIC program, commemorating the county's longstanding commitment to breastfeeding support. Each year, the United States Breastfeeding Committee sets a theme for National Breastfeeding Month. This year's theme, Forward Together, centers on unity, solidarity, and hope, celebrating the strength and determination of breastfeeding advocates committed to advancing policy, systems, and environmental change. In support, the U S government, through the Department of Health and Human Services and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, continues to actively promote breastfeeding initiatives and awareness. This underscores the importance of promoting the health benefits of breastfeeding through collaboration, leadership, and advocacy. Breastfeeding is the biological standard for infant nutrition, and it is recognized as a key preventative strategy for lifelong health. The health benefits of breast milk cannot be overstated. For infants, it provides complete, balanced nutrition essential for healthy growth. It supports a healthy gut biome, strengthens the immune system, fosters brain development, and reduces the risk of chronic illnesses such as diabetes, heart disease, asthma, and allergies. For mothers, breastfeeding aids postpartum healing and recovery, fosters emotional bonding, supports mental well-being, and is associated with reduced risks of postpartum depression, breast and ovarian cancer, diabetes, and heart disease. Some events and projects that we promote and participate in are the Tullary Kings Breastfeeding Coalition, promotion of the Regional Breastfeeding Liaison Program, Kings County's very own WIC baby showers for expected mothers on the program. And of course, as WIC, we provide comprehensive onsite and virtual breastfeeding support. Breastfeeding education and support have always been core to the WIC program. Today's proclamation allows us to move forward together by reaffirming the commitment of breastfeeding advocates across the county, the state, and the nation. Together, we can assure that WIC continues to fulfill its mission for another fifty years and beyond. This concludes my report, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, any questions to the board? We have a resolution number twenty-five dash zero five seven to present. Motion by supervisor Valley, second by supervisor there, do we have any questions to the audience? Saying then, we'll do a roll call vote.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Brubin?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes.
And we'll do a presentation down in the well.
All right. It's venture time. I didn't know that we do. Who, who'd be standing there? Everybody out?
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is administration, we have Matthew Boyett. Morning, Matthew.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Matthew Boyett, Deputy County Administrative Officer, Kings County Administration. Um, so before your board this morning is a, uh, contract, uh, to continue to partner with the Tone Consulting Group for, uh, broadband consulting services. So, we first began, uh, contracting with Tone back, uh, in March of this year. And since then, we've, uh, kind of stood up a five-county, uh, regional broadband consortium, um, to, you know, bring lots of investment and attention to the Central Valley as it relates to broadband, uh, broadband infrastructure and the like. Um, since then, we've also submitted, as a county, and partner with Comcast, we've submitted a pre-qualification application with the California Public Utilities Commission, or the C P U C, for, uh, some infrastructure grant, uh, grant funding through the broadband equity access and, uh, deployment, um, pot of money there, uh, which stands for B E D. And so, that's a infrastructure grant that would, uh, bring, uh, hard fiber infrastructure, um, to the community. So, uh, we have since submitted a pre-qualification app for that and did get word from the C P U C that our, uh, pre-qualification portion of that has been approved to move forward. So, um, that is a, uh, pending, exciting opportunity that we have in the pipeline. Um, also, since then, there's been coordination efforts, um, between the county, Tone, and, um, the I S Ps of A T and T and Comcast for their respective projects going on in the county, both in the Kettleman City area and in the Lemoore area for the, uh, federal funding account money, or the F F A, um, money that they received for the C P, uh, from the C P U C to, uh, bring, uh, broadband infrastructure here to the county as well. So, lots of great stuff has happened since March, um, and still lots of great stuff, um, that's going to continue on this year, um, and in the, the years coming. So, with that, you'll see that the agreement, uh, that the agreement before you this morning starts, um, July first of this year and goes on for two years. So, our last contract ended June thirtieth. Um, this one is a two-year agreement because, uh, much of which I just, uh, outlined as far as what's in the hopper, um, and what's on the horizon, um, for these projects is either long-term, multi-year projects, you know, eighteen months plus. So, a lot of this work is going to continue on well into twenty twenty-seven. So, much of the scope of work in this agreement that you have before you is the same that we had prior. However, there are a couple, um, adjustments, uh, with this, uh, new contract here. So, we added some provisions for some other technologies in here that are related to broadband. Um, so, we added some E V charging grant opportunities, um, there as it relates to broadband and some of those opportunities that we can bring here to the county. And we've got some monthly reporting deliverables, um, that are new to this contract that we didn't have before. In addition to, um, meeting initiation and work approval being, uh, approved by the county prior to, um, those meetings and work being done by, um, Tone. So, with that, um, the contract before your board this morning, you'll see there is a contingency on that. It's contingent upon, um, county's receipt of an updated certificate of insurance that matches the county standard, uh, coverages accordingly. I did receive an email this morning before this board meeting, um, for that C O Y. So, once I get back to my desk, I will be, uh, looking at that, um, and, uh, you know, getting that, uh, to the Risk Department and making sure that it meets, um, all of the county standards. And as such, we'll then move forward, uh, um, to the clerks for execution pending your board's action this morning. So, with that, the, uh, recommendation before your board this morning is, uh, the approval of an agreement with Tone Consulting Group for broadband consulting services retroactively effective from July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, contingent upon the county's receipt of the required certificate of insurance meeting the county's standard coverages. So, with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions for Matthew?
Just one quick one, sir. Hey, Matthew?
Yes.
The October fifteenth groundbreaking?
Yes.
Kettleman City. If we, uh, move that back a week, would that cause any delay?
I, I've reached out to, um, the, uh, my contact at A T and T already this morning and let them know of that slight conflict. So, we are working to push that towards the tail end of, uh, October. So, uh, I initially proposed sometime the week of October twenty-seventh. Um, so, we'll see, uh, what availability A T and T has, and they'll, they'll get back to me accordingly, and we'll definitely work, uh, with schedules accordingly, so yes.
If not, if not, um, if there's any issue, go with the fifteenth, kids. Uh, Carrie had reached out a week ago.
Correct.
And asked if, um, the fifteenth was open, and it was.
Yeah.
And then, um, like, two days later, I committed, I'm going to be escorting a veteran to D C on the honor flight, and we come home.
Okay.
On the fifteenth. So, if you can, cool, if not, push it forward and get it done.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
I can fill in for him.
Okay, I'll, I'll push for the week of the twenty-seventh.
Oh, I, well, I don't know.
Yeah, 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 I'll, I'll push for the week of the twenty-seventh accordingly. And, um, and if it's an absolute must, we'll, we'll be in, uh, communication as well.
Very good, any other questions from the board?
Just, just a comment, Mr. Chairman. No, I appreciate, uh, the work that Tone Consulting's done, and I just continue to support them, thank you.
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Motion by supervisor Neves, second by supervisor there, do we have any questions for the audience? Saying then, we'll go on to the board, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Joe Neves?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Brubin?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Robert there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
To your contract, looking forward to working with you guys. I know it's a, a lot happening at one time, a lot of moving parts, and it's really hard to handle. So, I do appreciate you guys coming forward and, uh, being here, so thank you. Okay, we'll go on now to, uh, would you like to say anything? You're gonna? Would you like to say anything?
But you came all this way.
Yeah, I, I think it's important. I think what's going to happen here in September, October is extremely important for the future of Kings County when it comes to broadband. I met Ms. Tone about nine, ten years ago, and she was extremely intense and told a lot of information over a short period of time, and I said, hey, back off, I don't know what you're talking about. I do like broadband, I do want to get in my county, but, uh, it's come to fruition right now. We're going to do groundbreaking coming up in September, October, uh, Kettleman City and the Island District in Lee Moore. So, all homes will have fiber in the Island District, which is great because, uh, you would never see that on its own, so we need some assistance. So, thank you for your systems.
Thank you, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I'm here, Julie Towns, CEO of Tone Consulting Group, and with Alex Town. Oh, no, it's fine, yeah. And Alex Town, President of Tone Consulting Group. And again, thank you for all of your support and, um, ongoing advocacy for the communities that you all serve. It's been amazing. And as, um, uh, Chairman just shared, in terms of the build-out with A T and T and Comcast through the federal funding account, um, Kings County, um, was successful in receiving over twenty-five million dollars in terms, the I S P providers received that to build out their broadband infrastructure. And the focus, um, and I received this from A T and T again, is to expand broadband throughout the entire city of, uh, Kettleman City. And their first permits are on track right now to begin in October. So, here, we're working very closely with, um, Jim and Public Works and Chuck and Matthew in terms of making sure that we're all in alignment and that A T and T is, um, making sure that there's capacity and scoping their infrastructure for growth and future communities, um, within that area. And then, um, the areas are south of Kettleman City near Highway forty-one and Kettleman Station, and then east of Kettleman City off of Racine Avenue, southwest of the city along Highway forty-one. Very exciting. Comcast is building out Lee Moore, um, their focus and, um, is in, in incorporated areas of Kings County, obviously. Their final design on the project is complete at this time, and we are expecting permits by the end of August. So, getting underway very shortly. Um, the areas there are north and west of the city of Lemoore, directly east of Lemoore Naval Air Station, and then south of Highway one ninety-eight between Lemoore and Hanford. So, very exciting as well. And I wanted to just touch on what Matthew shared, um, and thank you again. We were praised by Comcast for one of having one of the only partnerships with an I S P provider in California across the five-county region, which was very impactful for the regional M O U, so thank you again for that support. And happy to share that Comcast did complete their B E D application. It was due Saturday, August second, and that's to build out more east of the Hanford area. So, we're hopeful that we'll have a favorable response from the C P U C, and Kings County and Comcast as a partner will be, um, successful in that endeavor. So, more to follow there. One other just quick update. One other just quick update. I know, Chairman, we spoke about this. Happy to share, we're also working on behalf of Kings County and the regional MOU with the California Emerging Technology Fund to help ensure that not only are we building out high-speed broadband infrastructure, but we're helping to make sure that the communities understand the various programs that are available to them, especially if they're a CalFresh or Medi-Cal participant in terms of affordability, the programs that they can apply for, and any additional adoption and training initiatives that your communities need in terms of technology. So thank you again. We look forward to continuing to do work on behalf of Kings County. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions, concerns? We still have one project in the Tatchee Palace region that we need to work on, but it's there. We just need to get the communication brought up and get it to go forward. This is a big opportunity for the county of Kings. I know I started fifteen years ago in the first meeting I went to at a CSEC event where they were talking about, we wanted to get me on broadband to get it so I can be fluent in my, when I talk about it. It's taken fifteen years to get where we're at today. So I thank you. Thank you for your tenacity. And. Impatience, yeah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Don't listen, but it's all right. I'm okay with it.
Thank you, Chairman.
Listen to the retention part. The bandwidth is just not there.
And we. We were going the wrong direction, and we were saying, no, you, and and so in our RCRC group, we were going a different direction, and nobody got there. And we pulled out and got ours. So we did good. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you again to the Board of Supervisors for everything that you're doing to support this great initiative.
Valley, I'll do the ribbon cutting, whatever it takes.
Right, right. I know we're scheduled for.
Get pitcher in Kettleman City.
All right. Well, we'll work with AT&amp;T to see if we can push that. But thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, now that I'm off, we voted on that. Am I correct? Yeah, we're good. All right. So we're gonna go to a board member announced at the report. So we'll start with Supervisor Nevs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wednesday, July thirtieth, the monthly meeting of the Kings Waste and Recycling. We conducted a public hearing to talk about municipal solid waste tipping fee, not to exceed ninety dollars a ton. And we did that so that we could go up to that ninety dollars a ton and then incrementally take it up to that ninety so that we wouldn't have to be holding a a public hearing every two or three or four dollar increase. Currently, the rate will raise to the seventy-five, which is the limit that was set by the last public hearing on September second to cover all the expenses of the organization. The couple of projects that that are still needed to be funding is the water tank inspection and and possible repairs, waste oil tank replacement, the Calpers insurance, retirement, and then the closed landfills, as well as update the countywide integrated waste management plan. And those are all of the current challenges by current revenues. The increase failed two to two with one absent, but we're probably gonna bring back that back for further discussion. So if you need any more information or any any thought to it, we're certainly available to do that. A plug for the CARE ACT, the Personal Health Summary Program, is still, I think, about halfway up. They're still taking interview, are still taking appointments. They do a wonderful job with the blood draw and the bloody body composition. Not the bloody part, but the body parts. And I want you to know that I'm still an overachiever in the weight, as well as all the numbers in the blood count was all right. So I, you know, all the numbers were in the right place. And then school year, I think they talked about this back-to-school event this Thursday. But you'll see a lot more action around some of the school campuses as teachers and staff start returning, and they have orientations. So preparing students to return to camp, campuses either this week or next week. So just watch out for students and staff. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Supervisor Dare.
Yeah, thank you. I did what Supervisor Nev said regarding the Kings Waste Recycle Authority meeting, and I was I was present for that as well. Couple of shout-outs over to Tulare County. There are some, I've mentioned it here before, that there are some connections along the 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 boundary lines between Kings and Tulare Counties that, you know, half of them are our roads department's responsibility, the other half for Clary Counties. And and fifty percent of the problems that I've been encountered with from constituents that live out on the, on those borderlines have been that those roads have been repaired. So shout out to Tulare County. Give credit where credit is due. Was also reached out by, I guess it was about two or three department heads ago, Peggy Montgomery, that was the department head of HSA. She now is a big supporter of the Sharptimus Club. And I know that Carrier's staff sent out an email countywide for an upcoming event. I think it's called the Child Spree Event. It is back-to-school Child Spree Event. I know that the Sheriff's Office has always been, I think, DA many, anyway, it's a good opportunity to get involved if your employees want to help. It's September thirteenth, seven AM at JCPenney, but you need RSVP by September first. And thanks for Peggy for reaching out. And then this past Saturday, longtime colleague back wall back there, Dave Putman, and I attended Jim Hill's eightieth surprise birthday party. Jim Hill was retired as from the Sheriff's Office as a as a division commander. But he was a sergeant, I know, and when, at least when Dave and I, I think Rick Bradford back there too, started, maybe Nate and Chris. And that that he was a big mentor in many of our lives. This guy made us recite a speech that declares a very briefing. But it was good. It was good to be out there. We had a couple of former Assistant Sheriffs, Brian Wheat and Bill Landis were there. John S. is a former commander and a couple sergeants, P. Thompson, Ty Milton, had a little Sheriff's Office reunion out there. And it's good to see law enforcement reaching the age of eighty. Gives me a little bit of hope for myself. And then yesterday had the privilege to support and attend a fellowship of Christian athletes, a fundraiser golf tournament over in Visalia. The key word is Christians, and I think even with that, they cheat.
No, they. Come on.
It's 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 funny to watch score.
Those pencils had.
I know. It's funny to watch scorecards coming, because you're like, you guys are all gonna burn on one of these things. Ours was a legitimate score. But then it's just funny to watch these competitors that turn in these scores, and then they make them have it like a tee-off. And you see these golfers shanking balls all over the, and you're like, you guys are all cheaters. Anyway. Little, little humor. Anyway, that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Valley.
I was just chair this past Saturday in Kettleman City for the celebration of life for the former mayor, Harlan Cassidy, and Avenue, and Super Nevs was there as well, him and his wife, and packed church, standing room only. Very fitting for for Mr. Cassidy. And it was an opportunity to, they showed a lot of pictures and taking it way back and just learning more about what he did after his time of service there for the city of Avenue and how he just stayed stayed involved. And I learned some more things about him. But more importantly, we we heard a lot from his children about what he meant as a father, which is obviously more important than anything he does as elected officials. And that was good to hear that and learn more about that with Mr. Cassidy. Then this past Wednesday, I want to thank Jose Verduzco from PG&E, the one who took over for Nathan. He just, he came to Cork, and we spent about an hour at Amoria Coffee Shop and just got caught up and and ready to, you know, start building a relationship there and start working with PG&E on some issues in the area. And then lastly, Thursday, met with Mario Santoyo and some of the High School Rail folks that his bosses and people on his team with the city manager, Greg Gatska. We met for lunch to talk about upcoming road closure on Orange Avenue there on the north side of Cork rent. And it is more positive that area and what they're about to do there. They're about a year and a half ahead of schedule. So Greg was happy to hear about that. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Rusty Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week, just fielded questions from constituents. Also met with grand jury. I normally do that annually, and that's it this week. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. We'll move on now to board correspondent, Mr. Powers.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, members of the public, and staff. First, under staff updates, I failed in my duty last week to introduce Michelle Slade, the other Assistant County Administrative Officer Spears. I'm sorry.
That was going with. I thought we got somebody new.
I did, too. Michelle's been with us for a couple of weeks now, and I am very much enjoying working with her, and I asked her to introduce herself.
Good morning, Michelle Spear. So grateful to be back here at the county. For those of you who don't know, I did a brief tenure here about nine or ten years ago. I'm on day seven. Yes, I'm counting. A lot has changed in nine years, so there's a lot to get caught up on. But thank you to the board and CAO Martinez for bringing me back on board. I'm anxious and excited to be here. And I echo Michael's statements. We've been working really well together, and the team here is great. So thank you so much.
Very good. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And I promise not to rename you again. I'm gonna ask Rosemary to come up and introduce her newest staff member as well.
Morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Rosemary Rand, Department of Public Health. It's my pleasure to introduce Nicholas Montoya, who was just selected to be our new deputy director at the Health Department. Nick's been with the department four years since twenty-one. He oversaw a lot of the COVID funding. He's in charge of the blood drive. He's really a key member to the team, and he brings a wealth of experience. So welcome, Nick.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I know that long speeches aren't always favorable, so I'll try to keep it under ten minutes. First off, thank you to my director and assistant director. I'm humbled and grateful for this opportunity. And finally, I give my word that I will work to protect and improve the health of our community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Welcome. The under-board correspondence, the board received correspondence from the Board of State and Community Corrections dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, excuse me, twenty twenty-five, regarding the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six unannounced inspections of Kings County probation detention facilities. The board also received correspondence from the Kings County Monthly Fund Balance or of the Kings County Monthly Fund Balance, as well as the Treasurer's Report of Cash and Investments, both for June, two thousand and twenty-five, from the Kings County Director of Finance. Under upcoming events, as you're well aware, Kings County Child Support Services will host its second annual Summer Kids' Day this Thursday, August seventh, from four to seven PM at the Fast Plaza in Hanford. And yes, we'll keep plugging it up until the day. Kings County Behavioral Health will host its Survivors of Suicide Loss Support Group tomorrow, Wednesday, August sixth, from five thirty to seven thirty PM at the Kings Building here in our Government Center campus. Kings County Behavioral Health will host its Mental Health Family Member Support Group tonight, Tuesday, August fifth, from five thirty to seven thirty at the Kings Building there on campus. Upcoming agenda items for August twelfth, there are a number of items on the agenda. Administration has four items, approving and financing for the acquisition and construction of a qualified solid waste disposal facility, HRS four seventy-one Fix Our Force Act Support Letters, AB six ninety Opposition Letter, and Notice of Non-Gaming Land Acquisition Application. Behavioral Health has one item regarding a retroactive agreement with CalMHSA to participate in the CVSPH. All of those acronyms you'll get to learn next week if you don't know them already. County Council has one item regarding Conflict of Interest Code Amendment for Dudley Ridge Water District. CDA has one item regarding the partial reset, rescission and reentering of a Williamson Williamson Act contract in relation to an INLU parcel map number twenty-two dash zero seven. FIRE will have one item regarding the engine, donation of engine twenty-four to the College of Sequoia's Fire Academy. Human Resources will have three items, face covering removal contract with Grand Canyon University and county vacancies, AB twenty-five sixty-one. HSA will have one item regarding an agreement for motivational interviewing fidelity monitoring. Public Works will have one item regarding the Kings County Bridge Preventative Maintenance Program. And the Sheriff's Office will have one item regarding AB one seventy-eight Officer Wellness Grant Purchases.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to a closed session outlined by County Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two of subdivision D of section five four nine five six point nine of the Government Code one case. And the second item per CAO, CAO Martinez is being pulled. I'll turn it back to the chair for any public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll adjourn, and our next meeting will be next Tuesday, August twelfth at nine AM. Thank you very much.